We're running a few minutes later on to the end of school time. So, our first slide was we're gonna have an IB presentation by Susan Nguyen and Allison Sullivan. So, without further ado. And then, we're gonna pass a sheet around in a few minutes if everybody can sign in for us, please, and we appreciate it.
Okay, well, as you said, I'm Susan Nguyen, this is Allison Sullivan. And we co-coordinate the IB program at Dover School. And in most schools, there would be one coordinator, but we're both full-time classroom teachers. So, to make it a little easier, we split the job up. Allison is full-time 3rd grade, and I'm full-time 6th grade teacher. And as coordinators, our job is twofold. We make sure that teachers have their proper training for IB. And then, we do the bureaucratic end of IB, which is a lot of paperwork. I do wanna let everyone know that although Allison and I as coordinators have had more training than our colleagues, we are still learning along with our colleagues. We're not experts at IB, it's a long process. So, we're learning along with our students and our colleagues. So, tonight, we're not here to sell Wardsboro School on IB. We had a question from parents, maybe two meetings ago. What was so important about IB that Dover feels they really wanted to pursue this? And so, we're really here just to share with you what we felt the IB Primary Years Program, PYP as we refer to it, can bring to our students. We prepared a few slides. We hope that this will be informal, stop us, ask questions. We're not really going into how we teach IB. That would be a presentation for Wardsboro teachers if they want to pursue that avenue. We have some handouts at the end, Tammy is copying those for you. There's the ibo.org website, and that has a wealth of parent information also. So, please, stop us as we're going through, ask us questions. We'll be glad to answer to the best of our ability.
Okay, so, this is gonna be a little challenging because I wasn't quite technically ready. But, and I might need a little bit of light. If you can't, then I will make it work here. Is that okay? All right, so, just wanna start by saying that IB is generally a teaching philosophy, and it's intended to expose students to a global education. We want students to be inquirers and critical thinkers. So, we chose a quotation from the ibo.org website, and we also chose a short video. And that's what I mean by technical, I don't know that I have speakers. So, you might just be listening from my computer, which could be a little hard to do. So, the quote we chose was, "When we talk about education and what it means, what we really want to know is how to instill in our students the knowledge that will make them better learners and better people. How can we be sure that we send them off into life with the skills they really need to grow and develop in a successful, happy way?" And this is the video that we chose. It's just under two minutes.
We're dealing with individual mind and how they learn, and how they can best assimilate information, skills, understanding, knowledge, but also ideas and thinking and researching. All these things are universal skills that they'll use throughout life. I think the most important thing that students get from PYP is an independence of thought. It's the ability to find things out for themselves.
Children are able to go deeper in their learning. It's learning through inquiry. It's a lifelong set of skills or attitudes that the children will develop over time.
They go on as young global citizens into the world.
My apologies, that was probably the longest three minutes.
Well, Tammy, we can give speakers, we can show it again at the end.
Did not intend for it to be a silent video.
Yeah, we can show it again at the end, Tammy said. This was Matt's job, he was supposed to do the technology, where is he? So, again, we pulled out what we thought were some of the most important aspects of IB, that students learn to communicate their thoughts to multiple audiences. And what we mean by that is not that they have one science fair after another. It's that what they learn, they're incorporating into their lives and can work through, throughout their school career, and hopefully beyond that. And that they take action based on their learning. And Tammy and I talked before the meeting started, we were talking about kids in Wardsboro and the gilfeather turnip. That's an action. Doing a science experiment is not what IB means as an action. I had 6th graders who were concerned last spring with garbage being thrown on the sides of the road in Dover, and they went to the Select Board, and they asked that a sign be put on Route 100 directing our tourists in the area to the landfill so that they knew where recycling could go. So, action is, it's not just doing a science experiment, it's bigger than that. And it might be for younger children, simply, "I learned about conservation of water, and I'm going to turn off that faucet that's dripping at home." Rigorous academic and personal standards, and that we challenge them to think critically and creatively. It teaches not what to think, but how. And at the, I think at the first meeting that many parents were here, that's what Bill brought to us the first time he introduced the idea of IB, that we would teach kids how to think better, and that they could take it beyond into middle school even if there's not a middle years program. And it does include all of the Common Core, the Vermont Standards, and the Next Generation Science Standards.
So, the benefits to the community. At Dover School, IB has attracted a few new families. Families have actually gone to our website, and they've read about the program online, and they come and they let us know that the IB program is what made them choose our school to attend. Ultimately, the IB is very attractive to out-of-towners. It has also helped us send forth students after they graduate with a strong understanding of what global citizenship is. So, the benefits to the community are that it's an authorized IB world school that attracts new families. It broadens the opportunities for the multicultural students in our school. It also develops responsible, respectful members of the community who are aware of global differences and similarities.
And these are our reasons that we felt it was important to adopt this program, that our world is more connected, and to be prepared for that rapidly changing world is our goal of how we would like to see our students educated. It's a framework that provides a discipline system, it teaches students how to think critically and creatively in an international world. The program empowers students to create enduring, sustainable inquiry projects. The PYP program teaches skills that students will be able to transfer to any middle school. And it was used, the IB was used as the model for developing Common Core. So, we know that we are addressing all the standards.
PYP?
Primary Years Program.
So, IB has a primary years program, a middle years program, a diploma program for high school. So, at the elementary level, it's called Primary Years Program. There's a lot of acronyms in this also. So, IB also has benefits for the teachers and the professional staff. At our school, we have participated in numerous professional courses. We've been part of globally attended workshops, and we've established professional contacts with people worldwide. Some areas of personal or professional growth within our staff has been reflection and collaboration, and those are two integral parts to IB for the students as well. Part of the teaching and learning process of the PYP is to continually reflect on the units that we write, and then collaboratively with, collaboratively plan with others about them. So, they're not static, they're always changing, they're evolving, and they're improving as we teach them year to year. So, here's a list of some of the benefits for teachers and professional staff. We are members of a global community and have access to professional resources. There are opportunities for professional development through courses provided by the IB organization, and there's ongoing deep self-reflection and analysis of the craft of teaching, resulting in very enhanced teaching skills. And that is our last slide. So, we are, we are very happy to answer questions if you have them, and hopefully that we've answered a little bit about what IB is. We know it's complex, and it's hard to answer that in a short presentation like this. You really have to see it in action and learn from teachers that are doing it hands-on.
So, are there any questions from the audience or from the board?
Were either of you teaching at Dover before the IB program, or did the IB program attract you to become a teacher at Dover?
So, we were both teaching before.
You were before, so were you skeptical at all, or did you?
I'm sorry.
Skeptical, or did you have?
Were you skeptical? I think we were curious, we were intrigued, and we were excited about it. Bill talked to us about it, and he interviewed every teacher about it, and I, personally, I was very excited about it. I thought it was a really great next step for us, as something to enhance our teaching.
And the next step for the students. That was, that's what grabbed, both of us, I know that because we came on at the same time to coordinate, it was, "Our kids are doing well, how can we help them do better?"
So, as a teacher, you, Allison, you mentioned watching teachers doing this. So, I don't think this is a question you could answer, but just out there, how would that look? As far as like me seeing you teach a unit, myself going into your classroom, which I have in previous years, how would that play out?
Definitely, I think that if you came, if you went to a classroom and watched an IB teacher, knowing your teaching, you wouldn't see much different than what you do. There's a lot of questioning, and it's not really very different than any good teaching that you would see. What would be different would be what you see hanging on the walls and the vocabulary the students are using. And if you sat down with the teacher and looked at the way the units were planned, that process, that would, that would be different. But I think what you saw in your classroom would be very similar. Do you wanna add?
Yeah, I do. Several of us have visited schools, New Hampshire schools, Connecticut schools that are involved in IB. And what I found most impressive, even on my very first visit to a school in New Hampshire, is the kids are very articulate about what they're studying and why. It's different than my teacher told me to. Students were able to tell me what their interest was. And when we say this, we're certainly teaching all the concepts, the skills that students need. And then, beyond that, we're encouraging these students to ask questions about something that they can be passionate about. And they still are going to use all their skills, their Common Core skills, their Next Generation Science, the Vermont Standards, but they, they are more reflective and articulate about what they have learned. And a big part for them is journaling their reflections. And it's not, gee, Johnny didn't work well in a group today. It's how did they grow, how did their thinking change? What skills did they come in with, and what skills are they going out with? So, and in the schools I've visited, and we're still growing in this direction, there's certainly that, a deeper sense of community, a deeper sense of kindness among the students that I saw in other schools. And that's something that we're all working on in all of our schools.
I just wanna add that we have a little bit different perspective, because I've been mostly teaching 2nd grade and 1 year 3rd grade, whereas she's been doing 6th grade. So, there's definitely a different, a little different perspective in that.
Yes?
This perspective, I'm, my first year teaching at Dover as a first-year teacher of IB, I had taught in Colorado for many years, teaching in a similar type of inquiry-based teaching, where it was sort of taught in isolation, although the same concepts were being taught, like a higher-level thinking concept that the kids were trying to attain. So, a broad concept, similar to what IB presents. But it wasn't the same K6 vertical integration that I see with the IB. So, a lot of the same thinking of, we want the kids to be global thinkers and be articulate and that. What I like a lot about the IB is that vertical alignment that I see with the different units. The other thing that really strikes me for...
What is vertical, right now?
Oh, K6, so kindergarten, 1st grade, 2nd grade, thank you. And that wasn't the same in other schools I was at, where it was more 4th grades and this 1 thing, and it didn't have that continuation. So, that I can build on what the 4th grade teacher has taught, because I know that unit is gonna be addressing these key concepts. The other thing that I think has really stood out to me this year at Dover was how articulate, and you mentioned that in the presentation, those kids are able to present to many different groups, and they keep it up in front of their classmates, making them feel very comfortable. So, those are two things that I noticed as a teacher outside of IB coming into that.
So, we have any more questions for Susan and Allison?
I'll keep going. Sorry, they know me. So, as far as like expectations for teachers, mother of four, what, how far beyond prior to doing IB? Yeah. As I think we had discussed with Tammy, you're more than willing to do a teacher presentation, it would be very different than what we're doing here.
IB is a lot of work. Without any doubt, we will all tell you, it's a lot of work.
So, Laura just said, she's not, she didn't quite hear your question. Everybody know?
Me?
I heard the question, I just needed to translate it. So, I think it was in Teacher Speak.
Sorry. So, you know, I'm here, my contractual time, I guess I'm speaking contractual, and beyond. I think we all are. But, does this go beyond that? And, and this is where I don't think that they could answer, how would that change a contract?
Well, so, I think both of us can answer, and you know, we started in Dover several years ago, increasing professional development time, and we added days to the contract to allow for more professional development and allow, one of the things that, and I always point, like, 'cause Susan always sits there at the Dover meetings, you know, one comment she made was, "We don't have enough time with the students as it is, so we wanna make sure we got more student contact time." But also, 3 administrators ago, felt very strongly about professional development for the teachers. That, and her thing was, you know, the teachers need to learn too, not just to teach, but they need to also learn. And so, we really increased that, and we got to a certain point, and that was one of the things that when Mr. Anton presented, the IB thing was, you know, "We're here, we're doing good, but what's the next thing? And let's start it now, let's not wait till we start going downhill again. What's the next big thing?" And then, you know, that was, we'd gotten to where we need to be with the professional development to the level where they were all comfortable, and we were doing well. So, then it was kind of like, okay, here's the next thing. So, we mastered the, we mastered the car, now we're moving on to the truck, or maybe something like that, isn't it? But Susan?
I think training is continuous. It's not, you get to take 1 course and you're done. IB demands that continual training for all their teachers happen, and that's part of our job to make sure everyone's getting their intro courses and then moving on. And collaboration time, which, you know, doesn't affect the parents, but teacher time will really, it's a struggle in small schools to get collaboration time, because not everyone's there at the same time. And certainly in the beginning, the first several years, learning to write those planners and is time-consuming. But, I feel really good about how much more depth I'm opening up for the kids. I don't have all the answers to the questions they're asking me, which is great. So, I'm learning with them, and they have, they're more in the driver's seat.
I think it's really important for the board to understand that the time is needed, and in school with each other, the teachers need to collaborate on those planners. And for parents to understand too, there's more teacher days, this is why. It's really, really essential.
And I guess just to clarify a little bit of what Bridgette said, IB has 6 units that we teach throughout the year. They all have a title, and where we are in place and time, for instance, is the name of a unit. And kindergartners and preschoolers would be approaching that in a very different way than my 6th graders would. But, they are able to bring forth what they learned in pre-K, K, 3rd grade, to how we approach that same unit with different areas of interest in 6th grade. And the capstone of an IB program, whether it's 5th grade or 6th grade, depending on your school, is an exhibition where the kids put together everything they've learned from IB and do something with it. And it was very exciting to watch my students do it last year.
I'm curious about what concerns you have about the fact that it was a multi-grade classroom, which I know in the previous meetings we've said that IB is more geared toward that. How is that training going to, 'cause I'm guessing each individual grade goes based on the grade you're teaching for that training, so I don't, maybe you don't have any answer?
No, I do, because when we started, I was, I was a 5-6 teacher, and instead of doing 12, 6 units, I had to do 12. So, that there were, we'd work on the same theme, but there were different projects, expectations, skills for my 5th graders than my 6th. And IB knew that we had combined classes, and certainly they understand about small schools and the accommodations we have to make, they would prefer to see straight grades. But, it certainly can be done.
Just a follow-up, you said, so you had to teach 12 units, so the children in your class were learning different things and doing different projects?
They, so, yes, the 5th graders were doing different things than the 6th grade, but within a similar theme.
And our, last year, our 1-2 was combined just for that 1 year. I had taught 2nd grade, I handed those units to our 1st grade teacher, and she just edited the 2nd grade units so that they would align better with her 1st grade units. So, again, they weren't exactly the same, but she made it work so that she could manage all 12 of those. It's not easy. It's a lot of work, and it's very hard, but it can be done. And we get a lot of support from IB. There are, we have mentors, we have retired professionals that we can have come and help us and answer questions, and they really want you to succeed. You're not left in a lurch, not knowing what to do. So, they, you know, their ultimate goal is for you to do well, so.
Just one other thing, so, I know that Dover has just finished their certification for IB, it's not officially named a recognized school. Were there, is it just a matter of education timeframes, like the teachers have to take so many courses, and then you're certified? Or is there test scores that they look at? What are the measures that you went through to make it that you finally became certified?
It's a, it is a long process. We became a candidate school first, and we do have to prove to IB that we are creating these units, that we are teaching them, that we are using the IB attributes. So, here's the language, we have key concepts and IB attributes and learner profiles, and we had to prove to them that through candidacy, that we were achieving that. And then, when we became a candidate school, we moved on to working on being an authorized school. Our next 4 years is an intense self-study, that the school is continually moving forward with IB. It's not, okay, we're now authorized and we're done. So, it's a continual process.
Essentially, it's a checklist. Essentially, it's a checklist. And as coordinators, we have to make sure that we have all of the things checked off before the verification team comes. It's not based on test scores, it's not based on how much training we've had. The only requirement is that every teacher gets a Level 1 training. And the training beyond that is by choice what we wanted to do.
Are there students' work?
Yes. They look at students' work, yep.
Well, they did a study.
Yep.
And they taught the parents, board members, administrator, teachers, community members, they were there for a day or two?
Two days. We want to make sure that we embrace the culture everybody has, not just the administrator, not just the teachers, but the students, the board, the community, parents. And that we want to move forward with it.
Anybody else?
We will give you some candidates, help you digest. You can go to the website, it's very short. We'll be glad to...
Take phone calls.
Email us, and we'll answer questions best we can.
So we pass around the case, so both go around, you can sign any case. When you get to the front, you can go towards the teacher, and then you have a notebook back. Is someone back there?
I think it was like, sorry.
Yeah, I thought there was somebody.
Okay, so if everybody, this is pretty exciting.
Yes, he wants to be part of it. Were there other programs that Bill proposed at the time, other than IB? Or this is the only program that you guys looked at at Dover?
No, this was, we had a board retreat, and this was something he brought up. And the board, I think I've said it several times, the board did not totally buy into this program on day one. We spent, Susan, two years. Susan, a couple of years we were spent on trying, before, when Bill first proposed IB to the board, didn't we spend about two years, there were surveys sent out, there was, there were some visits by parents. Do you want to? Oh, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure, because it was your question.
You sent out surveys, and we didn't expect that.
No, and then we had, we spent about two years, teachers and board members and parents and staff went to their IB schools, made some research, there were surveys. Bill, as Susan said, and you have a new staff member. And then it was a unanimous decision of the board, but it was one that took some discussion.
But it was the only program that he was looking to create?
Yeah.
We weren't, we weren't, oh. We weren't looking to...
Right, Bill brought you this one program. It wasn't like, there's this program, and there's this program. He just brought one program, and then you know, that's why I was just wondering if you looked at other programs in addition to IB, or if that was the only program that he looked at.
And so I think we answered that, right? So the question, so what came to, I think how we approached this was, you know, Bill, we're here, we want to go to the next level, come back and give us recommendations. And this is what Bill...
I just want to make sure I heard you correctly.
Yes, sir.
Where would Wardsboro go into this? Do we have to start at 71? Or do we just kind of, what would be the process for Wardsboro we'd go through? Are we kind of key backing on Dover? Or do we have to start, you know, we have to start at ground zero? Okay, all right.
Oh, that would be wonderful for us. Because they, right now, up in Middlebury are doing K, what's this? It's Addison Central? They're doing pre-K 12 IB, they're doing the whole thing at once. And schools we visited have teams. So all sixth-grade teachers would get together every six weeks or so and plan units together. More brain power.
So we couldn't do that.
We, well, if you were like...
K-12, pre-K 12.
Right, but we can do pre-K 6.
Yeah. And as far as like a timeline?
They're like, right.
No, no, I'm talking about for Wardsboro. Given the changes that have, are going through right now, just, is this something that we're going to try and, if we decide to, start in a week? Or, or are we going to have like a, who makes the decision about when?
Okay, so, let me get, so no structure's been decided yet. Okay, that's why we've had these last several meetings. And then we are hoping to, by next meeting, give the superintendent a structure. I don't know how specific it is or how, how it's going to come out, because, you know, I'm not sure it's going to be a vote of the board to present something to the superintendent, who will then turn around and present, this is what it's going to look like based on what you're telling us. And then we would, and let's just say that everybody, everybody was in total agreement, and we were going to all be one big happy IB school, then it would just be up to the administration to determine how that works. We don't determine how that works. We determine the big picture, and we hand it off to the administrators to decide. Like, no board is telling Tammy what to tell her teachers to do. They say, we want to see improvement in math this year, because our math scores look bad. And Tammy says, okay, if I need to do that, I'm going to need a little bit more professional development in math. So I'm going to go to Wyndham Central and ask them to maybe bring some more math stuff in for us to do training at one of our, you know, in-service days. And they may ask the board for an extra half a day of in-service time, or maybe an early dismissal. And they would work that way. And that's how we see it too, that it would not be the board, but it would be the administrators who determine how the process rolls on down the line. Does that make sense?
I don't think you need to start planning IB. I'm just trying to make a lot of sense of that.
Go ahead, again.
So how much does this, how much did it cost for Dover to...
We allocated $30,000 three years, the first year for three years, about.
Thirty a year?
Thirty a year. Yes, that money, yeah.
Okay, and then, is that a fee every year? Are you paying every year?
There's a fee, there's a fee to IB, but what it was for was additional work and some additional professional development on top of our normal professional development. So bringing some extra professional development in. And then we paid for two coordinators. And we'd actually, they recommended one. And when we were talking to the candidates who wanted to be the coordinators, we thought it may be really good to have two, because there wasn't another IB school like next door that the coordinator could bounce stuff off of. And when that was presented to the two candidates, they both thought that was a good idea, so we went with that. So we didn't give as much to one, but we added a little bit more so we could give them both something. And I don't know exact numbers, I don't have a budget. And if that's important to you, I can definitely...
No, I was just looking around, I was just taking this...
Yeah, and one of the things we want to do is make sure the town understood the expense before we just, you know, did it. We didn't want to try to hide things, say, oh, it's only $30,000, but then next year come back and say, oh, it's only... We did get it approved for the three years, so we made sure that we started it, we could finish it. Yes.
What is the cost now?
I, you know, it's going to vary, it depends on, you know, what needs to be done and what they're going to ask of you.
How many teachers we have?
Yeah, number of teachers, how much professional development. Remember too, a lot of your IB stuff is, the common core that wasn't in place when we started this process is now in place, is based on IB. So possibly some of the stuff that's already been done, some of the in-service, you know, would help, is kind of towards that, so it may not be as bad. But, you know, and then it's three years later, four years later, five years later. So it's, you know, I'm sure everything, I don't, not much goes down at cost. But that would be, again, something that the administration have to, you know, work with us to give us numbers when they prepare a budget. Anybody else? Well, Sue and Allison, we really appreciate it.
Can that video get sent? Could we send that video or the link to the video to the people in here?
Yeah, can you send it to Nina, and then she can put it out?
Yes.
So if we go to the blog site, hopefully we'll have it, or the website, we'll try to get a link there so you can hear it in full volume. Sorry, it's on the Dover School website, just go to the IB page, and you can see it. Okay, are we good for that section? So like, Sue and Allison, what? Yeah. Right, everybody's all set, we can move on? Because I don't want to push it, I mean, I want everybody to feel like they all have questions. They got their chance to ask, all right. We kind of skipped over the beginning additions or relations to the agenda, because we're running a little late. But the business function presentation is going to be postponed to the second meeting in, second meeting in September. We just, Lori didn't have the time enough to get everything together, and we thought it would make more sense to talk to the treasurer first. And so we're going to postpone that, postpone that section to the 20th. So we'll go down to members of the public, and I just had comments from the public structure. And we did actually get a, we did actually get one message to, to the website. And I don't know if it's so much a question, well, there's a lot of question marks, or some statement. I'm interested in knowing how Wardsboro administration teachers feel about multi-grade classrooms. Does this enhance a child's learning experience? Or is it something that has just become part of Wardsboro's identity because of a smaller population? How do they feel about single-grade classrooms? I would like to see foreign language in the IB program come to Wardsboro. I'd like to learn more about the IB program. But my initial reaction is, why wouldn't we want a program that creates more intuitive thinkers? I want to invest in my child's education and don't want the idea of increase the taxes to limit the programming offered in Wardsboro. I don't like the idea of school choice being based upon what programming is offered in the school. If Wardsboro is considered a school to go for multi-grade classrooms, if Dover is a school for foreign language, and the IB program, I fear families leaving Wardsboro to go to Dover. I love the idea of the school linking curriculum and activities. Could this work with sports, create stronger teams? Our Athletic Something School Board has influences on it, does this fall somewhere? Excuse me, somewhere else? If an enhanced Plan A happened, what changes would need to be made down the road because of, on the state, or maybe of the state's emphasis on teacher-child ratios? I like that. So that was, that was one, I think the only comment we've gotten in two and a half years online, so that's there.
Nice catch.
So is there any other comments from the public on anything? That's the section line. Yes, no, okay. Reviewing through the minutes of the August 6, 2018 meeting?
No, we approved.
So Laura moves we approve. Do I, does that consider, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye? Cool. Vacation report, Nina?
Hi.
Hi.
The website is up to date. I still want to get a press release together and get that out, so I'll have to get in touch with you outside of the meeting hours to put together a couple of quotes on that, so look at Tyne Rich or Laura, whoever wants to chit-chat with me for the minutes. The other thing is, I want to let you know that the Comments News is doing a big education overview of what's going on. They have a couple of, three reporters working on that, and that will be in Wednesday's paper. So I don't know if I can communicate with you directly, or with the administrators, or principals, or schools, but I did hear that from the editor, Jeff Potter, I read an email earlier today, that the Comments is working on that. So that's something we might want to keep an eye on, see what they have to say. And maybe Riley responds back on behalf of the board, saying, you know, here's where we're at or something. So if you want to do that, I can help you with that. I'd just like to remind members of the public here and on tape that their website, rvusd.net, has a big write-off homepage, Ask a Question. All you have to do is click on that, and you can ask a question. And now you've seen how it works. I bring a question to the board at the end of the meeting, and they're here to either read it, or discuss it, or answer it, whatever. So you're all certainly welcome. If you think of something, all flowers, just hit that little button, and it will be, gives us something to be answered. I'm happy to answer questions from the board about stuff that you want to know from me, or things I can do for you. The Bucketville continues to publish the little column, so that's good. At least we're reaching people in Wardsboro via that. And there have been notices up on the bulletin boards, at least in Wardsboro, about the meetings. The town, the library, everybody's been real good about printing them out and sticking them out. I don't really give tabs much, know what's going on in Dover, but at least around here they are. So if there's any other stuff you need from me to prepare for start of school, or anything, I'd be happy to work on it.
Did the Comments interview you, or is it, did the Comments pay interview you for the article, or is it just...
No, no, I was asking about other things. Bill and I, Bill and Tom and I are working on something else for Wardsboro, so I've been in touch with Jeff Potter at the Comments. And so it's just sort of something that he told me today. So Wednesday, it'll be in Wednesday's paper, the big school starting rollout, review, overview, whatever. Everybody should probably grab a copy. It's the free paper, by the way, they have it at the library, general stores, and it's online as well, the Comments News, out of Rattler.
That was the plus one. Available. Is any questions for Nina from the audience, public?
Yeah, if there's any way that I can communicate back to y'all better, I'd be happy to figure out a way.
No, sorry.
Okay. Some questions, we'll ask later. Okay, so under all business, we have decision on budget votes. So I asked folks all for this to review the November 2, 2017 letter, email, uh, not email, right up to Andy did. And, you know, we talked that we could, you know, there was two opinions from the attorney, same attorney, two opinions. Arguably, that we could just change the voting met by majority vote of the board, but he felt that it would make more sense, he felt it would be safer if, since we have to vote by Australian ballot for the first budget, why not just put the question on the ballot with budget? Which seems to make sense to me, this is a fairly simple question. It's a yes or no question. Shall the River Valley, by school dish, adopt its budget by four vote? Yes or no? And then the second one was, you know, can we change the way we elect our board members? And again, he felt it was permissible to do it, because the worst-case scenario is if we change it and it gets challenged, that person maybe doesn't, isn't, you've got to elect it from the floor, isn't a board member, then the board has to appoint a board member for the remainder of the term until the next election. But he also says, we can put it on the Australian ballot in addition to the budget, how we vote for the budget, and how we vote for the positions. So if the board doesn't have a problem with that, my suggestion is we just make a motion to do that, add that to the ballot, and figure it out from there. This will be on the one end, this will be at the annual meeting for... No, this will be on the ballot at town meeting, when you vote on in your, in the town meetings, and then it's hominem, and it counts separately. So it's not, it's not going to be, like, there's not going to be a lot of write-in stuff. It's going to be three pretty simple yes or no questions. Do you approve the budget? Do you approve, do you want to vote from the floor? And do you want to elect your representatives? Is it Dover from the floor, or in Wardsboro? Or Dover from, by ballot, and Wardsboro from the floor?
And it'll be the same ballot in both towns, and the ballots will be co-may vote before the...
Correct, that's how, they have to be done. Since it's on a ballot, it would make sense to just put all options on there, though. That's what I'm saying. Yeah. Would you say from the ballot, from the floor, or on the, or the Australian ballot? No, well, I think it has to be, I think from what I understand, it has to be a yes or no. Can't be sure of this question, so we ask you one question on ballots. Do you vote to do this, yes or no?
So what we could possibly...
So, we could possibly, we could describe what the current situation is and then ask, do you vote to change that by doing this? Which effectively, sort of, if you really want to.
You don't want to make any more. So, what he suggested is, this would be the question. Listen carefully. Shall the River Valley Unified School District adopt its budget by four vote? Yes or no? That's it. That's a question. Who can I pick on? Who likes to vote by ballot? Oh, I want to pick on you and that. So, does that make sense? Shall the voters of the River Valley Unified School District, and now I lost a question, adopt its budget by four vote? Yes or no?
Because I've been to all the, all the meetings I've been to, it makes sense to me. But to people who haven't been here, that might be very different. And I'm, because the budget was previously adopted at the meeting the night before, at least in Wardsborough. And I know last meeting, there was some concern about having this vote done at the town meeting because so many people can't get there.
Yeah, the vote has to be done at the town meeting this year.
Okay.
That's, there's no.
So, if you limit, so, then that's just a matter of getting people out to vote so that they understand the importance of coming. Because if you're putting not just that on there, but also now how board members are elected and also how the budget is passed in the future, then that is going to, you know.
But then, it's also going to be coming upon the board, just like it's coming upon us now before the town meeting. To get people to understand what's going on so that they, if you want to say, so that they, that they aren't voting blind or that they have that, have that information. You can't have an article that have, you know, two pages of, of singles-based information to read. And we think that's why he's got, the questions are very specific.
It's clear the way you've heard it. Should the town adopt it by, by, it was clear.
Okay, one, two.
Now, I don't live in either town. May I ask you a question? Just clarifying.
Yeah, you're part of the public.
So, we have done our school, uh, town meeting the night before. Does that mean that this would have to happen at the town meeting on Town Meeting Day?
Yes, the ballot.
So, that would have to change?
First one would be at town meeting, yes.
Gotcha.
Is my understanding. Now, I think we can change, maybe we'll change that, but I think, and what we need to do is in September, we're going to get the town clerks together and see. Because if we don't do it on Town Meeting Day and have that ballot available and we pick another date to have a ballot vote, the town clerks are going to wind up sitting in there wherever they're going to have the vote for the, you know, from 10 to 7. And how many people are going to turn out? If it's at least a Town Meeting Day, I think you would get a better turnout. Because you have people going to Town Meeting, oh, I'm here anyways, I'll vote. What the heck? I'm thinking. But again, that's, that'll be up to the board. And I think that's where we were kind of leaning because we felt that would be the best turnout to get the greatest number of people. And then, I think, Adina?
Yeah, we can certainly front load this with a lot of PR ahead of time. Post the questions if we have them available on the website well in advance. We had talked ages ago about having informational meetings prior to the budget. But anyway, so that gives you time to explain all that.
We're required to have two. We're required to have one budget vote within 10 days before, one budget meeting within 10 days before the vote. So, what we had decided was that we would vote the town that the, the meeting was going to be in. We would have a, a meeting before that and then the opposite town would get the meeting 10 days before.
Right.
So, next year, the vote, the annual meeting will be in Wardsborough. So, we will do the, we will present the budget at the Wardsborough meeting. And even if it's going to be voted on a month later. But then, 10 days before the actual vote, to meet the statutory requirements, we would hold that meeting in Dover and we would reverse it the year that the, the annual meeting was in Dover.
Right, so my point is people will have the opportunity to practically see it all in writing before they ever.
And discuss it before they have to vote.
Right, and they won't actually be seeing it up here for the first time when they have to vote.
And I think that should cover, that, that way, we can get this out that this is why the question's raised like this and this is what it means to be vote this way and that way. And then, I think it keeps it cleaner on the ballot.
Yeah, so, a concern with the ballot, so if the, for the board member portion of it, you're selecting to have it, you know, done by Australian ballot or not. That's being, so the ballot is being combined. So, you may not get the true sense of each town if they combine them both. So, you know, we may not really know how Wardsborough feels if you combine the ballots in one, in one meeting.
But it's unfortunate both towns have to vote for that.
Right.
And I think you have to pre-sell it. I think you have to say, hey, look, most people want to continue this way in Dover. Most people that are saying, vote yes on the ballot. If you don't like it, you vote no.
They don't know if, in the informational meeting, do a lot of people will speak up.
Well, a couple things. You already discussed that town meeting last year and how they felt. And also, the budget is different because that's, is voted as, as a group where as the board members are voted in Wardsborough, it's all independent. So, I don't think that's, makes sense to put that on the, on the ballot.
Okay, and again, I'm just going to read from the attorney's letter. It's that, you know, the conservative approach would be to have the voters vote by Australian ballot to change the method of voting. For the Wardsborough.
But can we do it independently just in Wardsborough and just in Dover? We can't do it that way.
Right, because we have one, one additional.
Right, I understand, but the vote is one, that one town.
Well, you know, that.
So, well, we, my point is we.
No, so, again, let me read from the attorney's letter again.
No, I understand.
So, it's, there's no way, we can just decide, we can vote it. And if somebody wants to challenge it, then it's going to be Wardsborough's effect. He says, a more conservative approach, a safer approach, that's not going to be able to be recalled is if the voters approve it. You know, I don't think, Dwight, I think you're overthinking it. I don't, I don't feel like people in Dover can say, oh, well, Wardsborough wants to vote by, we want to vote.
Wardsborough and Dover do it differently currently.
Right.
So, people in Wardsborough, you know, want to do it, they want to do it again and Dover, they want to continue to do it.
But we're all, the question is only going to be to elect the Wardsborough representatives from the floor, not all board members. All we're changing is we're changing the way the Wardsborough vote goes.
But we're not really changing the way last time. It was the same way last time.
Right.
On the first, it was the way last last time. People have to be deliberate. They have to get signatures and they have to.
Get the box. This one, right. Well, this one, we had to get a decision.
Every question, button to be.
Because you was voting, remember too, the question was, do you want to combine or do you want to unify the schools and then vote for, not more, vote for this person for four years, this person for three years, and this person for two-year term? So, I mean, it's, it's multiple questions and figure this out.
So, if you're making Dover and Wardsborough, then they have to have the same ballot. So, Dover gets to vote on how Wardsborough was going to elect a person. Wardsborough gets to vote on how Dover.
Right, it's, the district is voting how.
Understood. I'm just, I'm saying it to get it out because I think that's, that's the point of authority. And my other question then, if we're looking for feedback is, does Vermont allow exit polling so that you can at least find out what Wardsborough people are thinking if they want to? Because that, that seems to be the concern.
I don't, I just think we're making that out of mold. Like, I don't, I don't think it's going to be a big deal. I think probably most people will, will vote that way because nobody at the annual meeting last year cared. And I think that, I don't believe that the Dover people are going to vote no because they don't like Wardsborough. I don't think the Wardsborough people are going to vote the way they want to go. So, I think as long as the board stands up there and says, hey, look, this is what most of people wanted. We're doing this as a conservative method. There will be some press releases. There'll be a lot of pre, pre-vote publicity. And I, I don't think it's going to be that big a deal. I really don't.
I think, so we could even do like a board recommend, if we got to that place, little slip of paper that people could elect to take in with them if they want to. Well, you can't, there's no way to do it. You can't have times or anything in there. You can't have any kind of campaigning. But there is a, you can bring in if we wanted to.
And also, we can actually have discussions about it at town meeting. When if they, if we vote at town meeting, we can, they said that we could discuss, you know, the unification vote, the Act 46 vote at town meeting, which it used to be, you know, if there was something by ballot, it wasn't, you know, like taboo to speak about it, like if you were to change zoning or the top of the building. So, I don't, I, again, I don't think it's something, I think we got a lot bigger fish to fry.
Okay, all right. So, it's basically just giving us some legal cover if we make a change?
Yeah.
Okay.
The voters make the change, not the board.
Yep.
Sir?
If the topic is open for discussion at town meeting, can Wardsborough send a representative to Dover to speak to the Dover voters about their interests?
So, each town has two representatives on the board.
Yeah.
So, at town meeting, you know, it can be brought up. I don't think you need to, I, I think the River Valley Board can represent the board. I don't think it matters where you're from. Because I think the board has pretty much always been in agreement that, you know, if it's works for Dover, let Dover do it that way. If it works for Wardsborough, let Wardsborough do it that way. We just want to make sure we're doing it. So, again, remember during the Dover, during the election there, Dover, they, you know, the attorney said, oh, that's fine. The Secretary of State says, I'm not going to weigh in on it. Secretary of Education didn't want to weigh in on it. And then, when it's all said and done, they said, oh, we didn't like the way Dover's vote looks so we need you to re-vote. Well, then why don't you tell us the first time, you know?
So, it's my understanding that both towns, we can vote on it the same way.
There's no, so there's no.
Oh, right, there's no longer two towns.
Right, it's the River Valley School District who has to vote.
Right.
The only, so, the lady in the back who said that she's not from Wardsborough or Dover, she can't vote on that. Only people that live in Dover or Wardsborough, so.
I don't think, we can vote differently in Wardsborough and Dover for our representative on the board.
Yeah, yeah.
We can do it differently. Wardsborough can vote, you know, by ballot and.
See, that works for us and it doesn't work for the West River. Because they have at-large members. So, that has to be by Australian ballot. But because we don't have an at-large member and we vote three from each town and they're specific to the town. So, I can't run in Wards, I, I, you know, people in Wards, I can't be Wardsborough's representative if I live in Dover. Dwight can't be Dover's representative if he lives in Wardsborough because it's, it's a three-year, two-year, and one-year term from each town.
Right.
Makes sense? No, it's, I'm sorry, three-year terms from each town, just three of them. They all get, right, staggered. Beat that one up pretty bad. Anybody want to talk about it more?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
I always lost one, but agenda. I have a question needed to be stated. I've already passed that.
Yeah, it's basically, is there specific language? All I'm thinking is. He gave us specific language for both questions. So, that's why I would say is, is we just have to work with the two town clerks to see when, do they want to do the vote on Town Meeting Day? Do they want to do it another day? And I mean, that should be up to them. And again, it's something, I would have thought Town Meeting would be better. Could you get a little bit better representation from the voters? Okay, so I'm going to move that forward to get that so that we can have that for the ballot. And I'm hoping in, in maybe October to have the town clerks come to the meeting to get that decided when we have our different, different meetings. Decision on election members, how do we get the information out to the voters? What is Leel and Gray? Budget informational meetings. And one of the things I was hoping that, and this was supposed to be up top, is how the, the business office get out the information on the vote. Because currently, what does Wardsborough do so that voters know what the budget is and what's going on?
We put them down in the town of, of the information meetings.
So, it's part of the town report. So, the only, in Dover does, Dover does it the same way. The only issue is, is that if we decide that, if they, if the town clerks want to have it earlier, we may not be able to piggyback on the town report because of warning requirements. So, I just asked what Leel and Gray does because they're a unified meeting school district. And they actually send a booklet out like 10 days before. And that's what Twin Valley does. But it doesn't seem like it's a long time to get it out to people. So, I, I just have that out there. So, when we decide when we do the meeting, excuse me, we'll have to also decide how we're going to get the information out. If we could do the vote at Town Meeting Day, then I think we're okay for this year to send it out to the two-town boards and just, there'll be issues. Right, for this year and then see where we go in the future and how we do that. Because if we do get through, we'll vote from the floor. We would have to have a meeting on a different day than Town Meeting. Review financial calendar from business office. So, last meeting, we got, and I put it in my bag. So, it'll be right here, clock, on here. And I'm not going to have any luck. Does anybody have a calendar? Did I pass those up last meeting?
There's a bunch of papers in the site that we made from last meeting.
It's, it's, it's pretty colorful. It's got a bunch of yellow lines and stuff. Basically, Lori Garland put together that if we're going to vote in May, I'm sorry, March, she needs to have some, you know, the budget done by December. We need to have a vote on it by January so it can be worn in February so it can be voted on in March. If we move that up, we can move it up. And she was just showing all the different budgets she has to do. So, I, I don't seem to be able to put my hands right on it. I'm sorry for that. But when she comes, pardon? When she comes to the meeting on the 20, uh, the next, second meeting in Dover, we'll make sure we just review the budget. And then, you know, it's going to be up to the superintendent to put a budget together anyways to present to us. So, that was review that. Structural discussion, board member structure, presentation. This will be fine. So, what have I been waiting for? Last meeting, we got more input. We did the second presentation. We had a discussion on Plan A and Plan B. And then, I asked that each board member come up with their article structure and present it at the meeting. So, unfortunately, Barry told me about 4:00, 2:00 this afternoon. He wasn't going to be here. He forwarded his files to you in the morning, you guys. Okay, Carrie has been pretty adamant she wasn't going to be here since we started talking about this meeting back in June. So, she did forward me something, but if the board's okay, I was going to go first because I went last, last time. Or if somebody is just dying to jump up and say, oh, she's, Lori, yeah? Dwight jumped up, yeah? Huh?
She jumped up first last time. And then, she's just sorry she did it.
No, I was not sorry. And I think you guys asked me to go first, so.
So, my structure's really easy. So, I've been basing my decision, or the, the reason I chose this, the reason I got on the River Valley Board is I thought it's going to be really fun to work and put together a brand-new school district, to be able to throw everything out and start from scratch. And I said, isn't this great? Instead of trying to fix something, we can just make something that works really well. And, but I do listen to people a lot more than people think I do. And I heard all the comments we had. And I think a good, a really good compromise is based on the article that I brought up last meeting from the Vermont Digger, where the four schools up in Wading, Dwighting, and a couple other towns, where they said each school's going to have their own little specialty. And, you know, even though they're close together, that they could, you know, that's more, makes more sense than having four schools that do exactly the same thing within five miles of each other. That's going to be hard for the state to swallow looking up from their high lofty seat. And having actually, some of you may not know this, but I actually used to teach in schools. And I taught in Guilford and I taught in Wardsborough. I taught in Jamaica and New Brook, well, New Fane and Brookline and Dover. And I used to do Dare Program and other, I had like 12 different programs that I was trained to instruct students on. And I really did think that, and especially in Jamaica, I don't know if anybody remembers when Mr. Prokopio was the principal over in Jamaica. He had a fifth and sixth grade class. It was a really neat class that I remember sitting there watching students working. And Mr. Prokopio would say, okay, the sixth graders, you open up your math book to this page. Fifth graders, you know, finish up on your geometry or whatever they're doing in their English. And then, he would do a thing, presentation for the sixth graders and he would switch it to the fifth grader. Then, he would have them working on it. And the one thing I always remember is, I remember a sixth grader walking over to help a fifth grader because he was having issues and he was raising his hand. And he looked over and said, can I help you with that? And, you know, he helped him with it and Mr. Prokopio wasn't able to get over there. And I thought that was always kind of neat. And that, to me, was always how Vermont was, you know, the small intimate classes and in multi-grades working with each other. So, my ideal, my, if I was the benevolent dictator of the River Valley Unified School District, I would leave both schools exactly the way they are. I would add a few things to the Wardsborough campus. I would add a few things to the Wardsborough campus. I would just, because we heard that there should be more professional development, I would have no problem for doing some additional professional development to make sure the multi... Instructors, teachers doing multi-grades. It is quite an art. And we even had done that in Dover for a while. And we met with some staff from New Fane that was doing multi-grades to make sure that we were doing it properly, not just saying, "Hey, look, we're going to put these two grades together and go teach it," to make sure that the staff has the support, the administration of the building has the support. Along with that, I would make the... I would work on a transportation system that works so that there can be cooperation between the two schools easily. One of the things that we talked about was like when we did the presentation for Governor Scott last year at the Wardsborough Town Hall. So I would want to see some kind of transportation system to allow movement between the schools. And I think we have to work on a very good school choice policy. And then I would let that go for a little while. I'll see how that works. And I think students and parents and staff will tell us what's working, what's not, and then we can make adjustments from there. So that would be my ideal, or my... My school system. I was benevolent dictator. So Rick, if you were a dictator?
Ah, I don't even want to be benevolent dictator. That sounds like an awful lot of responsibility. But it's funny that, you know, I came in the same way. We have to make some changes to the system in order to make this whole process work. And then, like you, I started to listen to everybody. And everybody seemed to think that we're doing okay right now. We really shouldn't muck around with things in the first year. So I kind of, you know, come to the same conclusion that we're going to wind up with two buildings with, you know, probably higher costs. Definitely higher costs. And we're just going to have to go like that for a while and see whether there are places that we can take advantages of, two schools being together. We need to bring some activities together from both schools, to bring the schools, you know, create some sort of culture between the two different schools. It's kind of the same. So in general, it's kind of... That's kind of the group that I've come to, too. It's kind of two separate enemies, two separate buildings. But, you know, bring the curriculums together and have some safety between the two schools.
So I think we probably have three big choices. We have to ensure that all of our kids have access to substantially equitable education opportunities, which all of Vermont's kids are supposed to have access to and do not. We might have been fighting that for a while. But we... That's what the Constitution calls for. And so in order for us to be able to ensure that all of the kids have access to substantially equitable education opportunities. The three ways I think we can do that are... I think we can leave the schools as they are. And in that case, we would have to put in a full choice for all of the kids, so that every child had the opportunity to choose, had access to both programs. And that... That system... Thinking about that system in our towns does give me some pause. I'm concerned about population. I'm concerned about creating any kind of instabilities in either of the schools. But I think we could do that. And I think that that would be offering all of our kids substantially equitable opportunities. I think that we could equalize the programs, sort of, but not really, because we can't do single grades. We can't do single grades in Wardsborough, because there's not enough space. And we can't do combined grades in Dover, because there's just too many kids. So... But we could probably equalize that, so that substantially it doesn't have to be duplicate, you know, complete duplicate. And that's going to cost us more money. And I don't know that it is, A, either the most effective use of the resources, the buildings, the staff, the administration, the communities, or that it is improving opportunities for the kids. And the third thing I think we can do is B, what Bill had proposed can be similar to what Bill had proposed. I absolutely do not think that we can do that in year one. I think... I personally think that the best thing to do is to go on, I think, a three-year plan to set out on a trajectory of going towards B over three years, which I think allows us time to adjust.
Sorry, I'm having difficulty with security.
I'm having difficulty. And I'm tired to remember.
So we're talking about similar to option B, over two years? You get started?
Three years.
Over three years?
Over three years. And that would allow us, I think... I think, first of all, it takes some pressure off. Creates a lot of space for training. It creates a lot of space for collaboration. It takes the pressure and angst off of families, teachers, communities, that there's immediate change coming. I think it allows everyone to feel like we have more control over where we're going. You know, it's really hard when we're creating a brand-new school that none of us have done, to know exactly how to do it. And so I think giving ourselves a guidepost, which is similar to what I think Rick and Rich have said, but I'm saying a little bit more specifically, I think we should have a, maybe a goal out there that we're heading for. Doesn't mean we can't deviate from the goal.
Okay. When I first started on the study committee at ID46, you know, we were given kind of told that there would be increased opportunity for the students and educational opportunity, I guess. And I think what Bill presented, option A, would be both of those do that. And so I'm encouraged by that. Because I've always think that, you know, we can do better, just like you guys did in Dover. When ID was presented to you, you felt like you were good, but you wanted to be better. Both my kids went through Wardsborough for a good education, but they need to be better. So I liked, from what Bill presented, I liked option A. And I liked it pretty much the way it was written. I felt that created equal opportunity between both schools. I liked what I've been hearing about the ID. Do I know all about it? No. What I heard tonight, only maybe feel better about it. I think that we should go on that path. I'm concerned if we just stay the way we are and allow kids and improve busing, allow kids to go back and forth, and let's say, kids love ID, they don't want to stay, then it'll be too late. I think we need to start that process now. And we can make that change down the road. So I think we should dive into it personally. And I'm going to note to you as well, I think by keeping the structure the way it is, we can still maintain our identity here in Wardsborough and Dover, keep the parent grade structure as it is, and by having similar programs in both schools, you know, avoid busing, which I want to minimize, not increase between the two schools. I think professional development in any form is good for teachers. And from what I'm hearing, the development for... Professional development for guide program is excellent. I think, I don't see why we wouldn't want to go down that path. It's great. Of course, we'll have the partnership with Dover, so life will be easier for the teachers. Or collaboration, I think is excellent. Of course, I love having foreign language in both the schools. I think that creates more equity. Increasing our media, our digital media and our libraries, great. These are all positive things that I think are a real plus and improvement in Wardsborough. Do they come with a cost? Sure. But I know, I mean, I'm on the Wardsborough board, and we've been asked to kind of improve things. We have a good budget. We have some money in reserve. So why not use it in professional development in some other areas? I think this is the time to do it. It's an excellent opportunity to invest in our schools and make it better than what it is now. So I think... And also, one last thing, you know, I think ID, and I heard it tonight, and ID can improve the stature of Wardsborough. And I think that's a good thing. You know, we're a number group, we're going down in Wardsborough. And why not, you know, get ourselves on the map, make ourselves more approachable, and have people want to come to Wardsborough, to the program. It also creates a situation where there's transfer between the two schools. So if you're in Dover and you're studying ID, but you want to move to Wardsborough, you might be seeing this transition. You might be able to come into Wardsborough and continue on the same kind of path, rather than being just a little different. And you might be headed to do something like that. I know there are a lot of families that do go between these two towns. So I was looking at it from the perspective of the town as well. A lot of the ideas shared, resources for music, art, and those kind of things, and also for sports. So having maybe more athletics available, cross-country, running, that kind of stuff, or all kinds of stuff. So yeah, so I really was encouraged. I was impressed by the presentation by Bill. And I felt like, I think, option A pretty much is written as an excellent opportunity for Wardsborough and the district.
So Carrie, Katie, Dawn Katie, sent me something. I think I got it, because she sent me eight emails. They all look the same, but I'm just noticing... Just got to set some hangs here. So she put River Valley's Unified School District, Dover campus, and Wardsborough. So under both of them, she put pre-kindergarten, three-year-olds, in Dover campus, four-year-olds in Wardsborough campus, full-time, four days a week, Monday through Thursday, pre-kindergarten, four-year-olds, full-time, four days a week. I don't know what that is. Pre-kindergarten, four-year-olds, okay, that makes sense. Kindergarten, full-time in both buildings, the first and second, the third and fourth, and fifth and sixth in Wardsborough, one through six in Dover, single-grade instruction, combined-grade instruction in Wardsborough, ID in Dover, Ed, professional development on ID in Wardsborough, Spanish language K6, two times a week in Dover, and Spanish language K6, two times a week in Wardsborough, shared music teacher, two and a half days a week in each school, shared art teacher, three days in Dover, two in Wardsborough, full-time physical education teacher, one in each school, I think? She's listed in both sides. Transportation for pickup and drop-off, K through sixth grade, share music, one of the Dover buses, pick up K through sixth grade, Ed, professional development on the Wardsborough side, and uncombined grade instruction carried over. And then she has what she called "build-ins." Shared spring and winter concerts and alternate between campuses, shared music, teacher instructing kids with singing curriculum, so songs learned will be the same. Dover campus has spring concert, Wardsborough has a winter concert, and alternate years, each grade completes a shared project with the other campus grade. Overlap of curriculum between the two campuses. Presentation of this special would be presented to parents of both grades at a parent-teacher conference. Incorporate use of SKP, going in more difficult months of winter, so kids aren't to travel. Combining other specials like field days, Kuwaiting Art Night, class field trips. And then remaining schools... Remaining schools, so it is renaming schools, I'm sorry. So it's River Valley School District, Dover campus, with its model artwork behind. River Valley School District, Wardsborough campus, home of the Wardsborough Panther. And speak with coaches about combining teams. And this is, I think, there's something else. It said, "If the increase, then there's nothing after that." I don't think any of the sports is school-based. It's all like Little League is different.
Soccer isn't school-based, but it's changing validly. I understand that.
Yeah. I don't think it's going to be school sports. So there's five... Here's your... She doesn't agree. So there's your different... There's the different motion boards. So is there any discussion from the public? Send you a flash? Yeah.
Send it to me. I won't have to spend an hour.
Any discussion?
I'm ready to spend it.
Any discussion on thoughts from board members? Any thoughts from the public? Yes?
Stephanie for Wardsborough. I just had spoken to some of the people. I'm wondering if the language has to be the same in both schools, or if maybe American Sign Language could be offered in Wardsborough, which is also a pretty valuable skill to have. Just if it has to be the same, or Wardsborough could select a different. But if you're using teacher resources, if you're going to share research sources, then it has to be the same.
So my plan... So my plan varies a little toward, like Laura's plan, and Carrie's is very specific to a language. Mine is... I don't even know if you would offer a language in both schools. I think you could do the language in one school. Maybe the other school doesn't want it. Maybe we just do it in certain grades. But that would... I think you can do that, because I think we allow it that the... And again, I'm looking at what these other towns did, is that they're trying not to make... We're not having two of the exact same thing, because that makes no sense, doing the exact same thing in two buildings that are five miles apart. Because the state's going to come down on us and say... But if we can say, "Hey, there's a big difference. This school does this this way, and this school does this that way." And if a child wants to do this here, they can go there. Or if they want to go from here, they go there. And this is how we allow it. I think that's a way we can save everything and not have to worry. If we just, yeah, if we just offer the same exact thing in two buildings, it will not be long before some bureaucrat at the state says, "Oh, I take my little ruler, and it's, you know, a flat line, and it goes from here to here." That's nothing, you know? They tried that far in the North Sea Kingdom. So if it's good enough for them, it's good enough for you guys in Dover, so in Wardsborough. So I think... I'm leaving mine very open. And then I think it's up to the education professionals to tell us what they think. You know, maybe there is... There is a different language in both schools, and that provides a difference. Or maybe it's... Maybe there's more of an emphasis on, you know, instead of foreign language, maybe more an emphasis on poetry in one of the buildings. And that's how... If people in the other building of the campus want that, then that's how they, you know, they ability to move back and forth. And again, mine's a little bit more general. I don't always try to be specific, because I'm not the education professional. I'm going to hope that the superintendent's going to. But we have to wind up somewhere in between with what we discussed. And we've got to get four board members to vote one way or the other.
Yeah, I just, I don't know. I'm not sure if I agree. If we're not, if we're... I don't know. I don't know, you know, but if the schools are different, we have them more attractive. But I think they're wholly concerned with numbers in schools. If there's plenty of kids here in Wardsborough who have the same program, they're not going to ask us to vote. But maybe I'm wrong about that. So, you know, if we're attracted, if Dover's attracting more students in the district and we have less, then I would think then the school would take notice that we have fewer numbers in the schools, not the fact that we have different curriculum or whatever else has differences. But I'm not sure about that.
I know that if you... I know that student-staff ratios have always been looked at as one of the biggest... Your biggest expense is your staff, is your labor. And I know that, you know, they're always doing studies on the student-staff ratio. And I think we could argue that better if we're doing the same exact thing in two buildings. And then you can say, "Well, you got 12 here and 10 there, and you can do 22, because you can have up to 25 because you can have up to 25 in a four, five, or sixth grade classroom. It's very easy to say, ah, we don't need that. But if we can say, oh yeah, well, we have 12 here and 10 here, but the reason is, this is a totally different program, and we understand they're close, and that's the draw of it, because if a family wants to do this, and then I think the families start to tell us what should be in each building, because that, they're going to be asking for that, they're going to want what they want to see. And I think, and again, I'm just throwing out one option, I'm not saying mine's the right one or the wrong one. Again, I don't know, I don't know exactly what we're going to wind up at the next meeting, but we need to decide something, we need to get to the administration for putting some hard numbers in.
The choice, the full choice piece makes me nervous, because of the number of students that we're talking about, and the volatility that we could really see in the classrooms. That, but I think we would have to do that if we maintain, you know, two nice distinct programs, which, you know, is definitely, it's definitely something we can do. The only thing that concerns me about that, the only thing, is the volatility. And, you know, this year you've got, you know, two students in your class, you've got, you know, five students in your class, next year you got 10, you know, somebody gets, you know, next year you down to four, you know, and that. Because there's not a lot of kids. So that's, that's the piece that concerns me, just with the, with the full on choice. I like the idea of having people be able to say, you know, this works better for me, and that works better for me. But the size and the stability in the overall system is my concern with that.
But, and the reason I thought I'd like that, after reading the other articles, we can make adjustments in both buildings to kind of counteract that. And, I mean, I can't think of a good example, but if we're finding that a lot of people are coming to Wardsville, and we're going to overload the Wardsville campus, and maybe they're all, we say, they tell us the reason a lot of people are coming here is because Tammy instituted this really neat art program. Well then, maybe we need to splinter that art program off, so if that's the reason people are coming over. But until we actually offer the two programs, we don't know what's going to happen. And the one reason I really changed my mind, I was thinking we needed to be exactly the same, I really did. And reading some of those other articles and thinking about it, and then the, listening to people speak, there are some really great things that happened, so let's build on that, make that work by utilizing the extra resources and the ability to maybe have people go both ways, whether you live in, and you're actually, you're not, that, what you stated almost added that, that whatever town you live in, you have to go to that campus, and we need to make a, you know, we're required to make a policy. Because you said, well, if I went Dover and I'm going to join the IB program, and I come to Wardsville, then I'll be a seamless transition to the IB program in Wardsville. But we don't have to do that, because if the family moves from Dover to Wardsville, a child could still attend the Dover campus if they wanted to, and vice versa. And I think that's why we have to, you know, part of it is, we are required to do a transportation, and we're required by our vote to do a school choice policy, a school attendance policy. And I think we can work on it with that, and then we see what happens, and then in two or three years, you know, we may be surprised how things change. Again, I can't see in the future, I don't know, but let's see where it moves to.
I guess I see it differently, you know, I see if, you know, I'd like to reduce the urge to go to a different school. You know, if you have a similar curriculum or structure in each school, you're reducing that. And you're reducing, you know, it seems to me like you're asking people to bus more. If they want to make the choice a little bit simpler, and you're busing kids back and forth. It's not required that we bus kids between the two schools.
Well, we don't know what, we don't know what.
I know, you're saying, right.
We have to decide.
Right, have to decide. But let's make that, for me, make it less necessary to have that bus going between. But if you're in town, then you feel as though I can get just as good as if you can hear, as there. And for me, it's the equivalent, come down to it.
And then, and then again, that I fear greater than I do having differences, because I think it's easier for the state to say, you have the exact same thing going on in both buildings. You know, close one building, save $200,000, that's a choice, we're going to make to do that.
I don't see the state saying that.
I had one, one in the back.
Obviously, you said we are required to do transportation, that's, I think Dwight caught that too.
No, we did, we agreed in our articles, and we discussed transportation, having transportation.
You just, you agreed to discuss it?
Yeah, we would have a transportation policy, and a building, use of building attendance policy, school choice policy, I can't remember the exact terminology.
But that has, we haven't defined what that's going to exactly look like yet, right?
Until we determine what the schools look like, or the buildings look like, it seems pretty interesting. We go back to our calendar that we did last year, which I'm actually impressed that it's still pretty much on, on, you know, on, because of the great chairs, because it works well. It's, we had to work on building attendance and transportation through the fall, because we're hoping, once we design out a structure, then we can, that will play into the building choice and to the transportation. And then we can also, the superintendent then will put some more numbers to a budget, so that we know what the, you know, what it looks like for cost too. And then, I think, Josh?
What is the overall goal of Act 46? It was my understanding there was supposed to be some money savings. No, okay, that's why I'm asking that question, starting, what is the goal of Act 46?
So it never really allowed to agree. But if you look at Act 46, it tells you in that kind of preamble, and what it is intended to do, and it does not, it's intended to reduce the inequities and increase opportunities for all students by better use of resources.
Better use of resources, so, okay, thank you. I understand Rich's concern, and I kind of agree with him. I'm afraid if Wardsville and Dover are the same, the state being the way they are, we'll do further consolidations. I think we actually have a chance, by differentiating the school, of creating greater opportunity for them. Just as an example I'm pulling out, what if Wardsville became a STEM center? And became, you know, tech-focused, as opposed to Dover, which is IB-focused? And now you're giving kids a chance to decide, I don't know if they want that elementary grade, but the ability to really go tech-heavy, or going IB-heavy. Or that, I think, is a chance that if, if, I think that kind of gives us more of what this consolidation could do for us. I'm really afraid of having two schools that are the exact same, because then I don't know what the point of the consolidation was, because Wardsville could have been IB before the consolidation. I agree with Rich, I'm afraid the state's going to come down and just squish us together anymore.
And they may do it in that way.
Well, yes.
Do you foresee, I guess this is a question for Laura, that the state will then merge the mergers? That they'll come back to us at some point and say, okay, you didn't do enough, now we want you to partner with Rest Rivers and start all over again? Is that a thing?
You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things happening, really. I know there's a new secretary, who has talked recently about the state's obligation to ensure equity of opportunity for students. We have the state board having these really wild meetings right now throughout the state, hearing from communities that have not either done the hard work that Dover and Wardsville did, or who have refused to come together to try and improve opportunities for their kids. And so I think, you know, I think it's a pretty dynamic environment we're living in right now, so.
Same as, yes.
And I think, you know, I think it's all, yeah. You know, and I, and, you know, I would say my other job that I do, that's not a school board or legislator, the thing that I worry the most about every single day is the amount of people that we have in Southern Vermont. And making sure that we don't lose our institutions, and that we maintain, you know, as many stable institutions as possible because of the population situation that we're looking at. So, we've, you know, I think we've got a lot of opportunity. These are scary choices, these are tough choices, but I think we also have a lot of opportunity. I have to think out of the box, and.
The other problem is, is that we're still at declining student population. So Marv, Dover has shown some growth, other towns are showing losses, and that's, you know, if that continues on. And I remember when this all first started, we went to Montpelier, and Stephen Khan and himself, and three or four other people, you know, they said, what do you, what do you look like in 10 years, in 20 years, if your student populations continue? And they showed us the state's student population trends, and it's, you know, there's going to be a lot less kids. So unless everybody in Wardsville and Dover commits to, you know, having six new children in the next, one year, for the next six years.
The hands, remember the hands.
You know, and there, you know, there's not booming economy to draw people in.
Well, well, let's be careful. There's a lot of good jobs, and a lot of employers that are looking for people, so.
But then you also need affordable housing to get those people here. I mean, you know, one of the things is, I always say, it's so easy sitting on a school board for a K-6 school district, because really, it's a very small world we're taking care of, and we have a lot less headaches. We don't have the truancy issues, we don't have the violence issues. You know, I look at some of the West River and the Leland and Gray meetings they have, and some of the executive sessions for things, and I'm like, I'm glad, I don't have to worry about that. But I also say, then we yell at the legislators, you know, they're not worried just about the education funding, but they got to take that and then work on the human services, and the prisons, and the roads, and the security and safety, and you know, it's nothing acts, everything has an effect on something else. You know, if the, I remember one Wyndham Central meeting, we had a board member from town, and he said, hey, look, you know what, we shouldn't be worrying about education. If the economy was booming like it was in the 80s when Manon Keenan was governor, you know, she couldn't spend the money quick enough, you know, we wouldn't even be having these discussions. And the state would be giving us money like they used to hand out all the time. The towns got big grants every year in schools, and, you know, so it's all kind of tied in together. You know, you look at that scary number, how many children the state's taking custody of still, every, every day, every week, every month. You know, they don't have enough foster parents, and, you know, and where does that all get dumped on? When I started, in my career, there was SRS, Social Rehabilitated Services, they did everything for children. You know, and then they said, oh, well, they're going to cut a little funding here, so we can't do, we can't do counseling for kids, so we dump that on the schools. And then we said, hey, teachers, not only going to teach, but you got to be, you got to counsel, you got to, you know, train, you got to help the students with their home life, you got to be a mentor, you got to be their, their, we just make, and all this kind of, and I just see it not getting any better. I see budgets getting tighter, every year there's a huge fight in Montpelier over where the bodies going to go. And I think if we can make a really strong program, and I really like Josh's idea of, you know, like, maybe Wardsville's a STEM center, and Dover's the international center, and, you know, that would be really cool. And that's really easy to justify, not only that, but I think as tuition stuff opens up, you know, maybe we'll, I think Dover and Stratt get a majority, or Dover and Wardsville get a majority of Stratt's students now, but, you know, maybe we'll get them all, maybe we'll get some in-home students come over. You know, maybe we can grow our population. And I do know in Dover, we've had several families move in specifically because of the school. They were going to move up to Southern Vermont, they look on websites, and they look at test scores, they look at how schools performing, and if we could show them that, hey, you know, not only this, but if you have a child who's really interested in international learning, a child who's really interested in whatever the other object is, you know, I can move into this one town and get both my needs met. And then I have secondary choice. And I don't think that we're going to see, we can't really, combination's going to be difficult, because the state's been pretty good about not mixing structures again. Everybody remember, the structure is what your school is, that's why we can't combine with West River Valley unless you change the vote, vote to change your structure. And that's why somebody had asked a couple meetings ago about if sixth grade moves into Leland and Gray, could we put our sixth graders over there? We can't, because that's not our structure. You know, we're a K-6 structure, we would have to change our structure. So, is there anything coming from anybody else? Yes?
Um, so you're going to finish on a decision about structure, and then Bill is going to provide a proposal? This is what I'm hearing you say. And then after that, you will start in the fall, like maybe closer to the later end of the year, talking about school choice programs, and transportation, and all those things. And you'll also be working on the budget.
So what's going to happen is, is we, we need to make decisions as a board, I hope we can do that in our next meeting. And we said, okay, though, this is what we see. So Bill's going to watch the video, he's at West River tonight, so I said, you go to West River tonight, next meeting it's more important you come to us, because he can watch this and see what's going on. We can wave to Rick in the background. And then we can, and then while he's working on the specifics of that, then we can start working on the school choice and the transportation. I found my budget chart here, it's a colorful thing, I don't know if he's got it, but. So basically, she has, Lori put together for her draft of the votes on Town Meeting Day. Our annual meeting has already been set, it's February 18th. She's looking at if the board approves the budget the first meeting in January, which we, January 7th. And that we, the first draft of the budget's presented to the board at the first meeting in November. So between those two times, we don't have to have the policies done, because they don't go into effect till July 1st, but I think we should start on them, because I think they're going to be, they're not going to be simple policies. Like, we got all the low-hanging policies done, the low-hanging fruit. We have a couple that, those two are probably going to take a little bit more time. Any other thoughts, comments, concerns? Yes?
I'm just going to bring it up, because you say that Act 4, February 18th.
I'm sorry, what?
February 18th.
Well, February 18th is the annual meeting, the River Valley Unified School District annual meeting.
It's in wherever, it's a vacation week.
I know, but we.
I'm just really concerned that you won't get a lot of people there at all.
Yeah, we only had about 20 people there last year.
But it was, I remember I was there.
Well, it should have been brought up last year, so, I mean, we have said it the year before, so we don't really have a lot.
I think it's the 13th, because February 18th.
Oh, 13th.
It's the 13th, so.
13th, I know, yeah. Oh, sorry, the 13th.
February 13th.
Lori had a problem.
I was looking at that.
Did you read the story? Okay, if we're good with that, so see, you made a good point, thank you, straighten this out. Um, I got a new business. So the only new business I had was, I had one person ask, we've met three times in Dover, in Wardsville in a row. So just so, I hope everybody remembers. That was you, yes, okay. Well, we actually met in Dover twice in a row, because we did the first June meeting, which should have been a Wardsville meeting, but we met in Dover. Then we were going to meet in Dover this meeting, but we thought the IB was important for Wardsville more, so that's why we did that. But we will have two meetings in a row in Dover, so then we'll be even again. And then starting in October, we'll be, we'll do Wardsville the first and Dover the second. And I didn't know that was you, I'm sorry, I can't see that, I just see a white shirt coming smiling. Laura, you have a new business? It's on the bound, it's on, September 4th at Dover at 7:00, and September 17th at Dover, also at 7:00.
September what is that called?
September 17th. September 4th.
Is it Tuesday?
Right, we're meeting the day after Labor Day.
Right, that's the one.
Right. Okay.
July 7th, I'm moving from Montpelier.
7:00. Okay, Laura, who's got the floor?
Resolutions that have been proposed by other districts throughout the state, through the SBA.
Can you speak, Laura, to me?
There are like 15 different resolutions that have been proposed by other districts throughout the state that will be voted on at the SBA, Annual Municipal Board Association. And those then become the policy positions of the SBA, and the pieces that they will be arguing, supporting, advocating for. And that is a, that's a record number of resolutions. So those will be represented by the district, by the supervisory union, full vote.
So just so people understand, membership to the SBA used to be by school district, so each town had representation, and we would pay. A couple years ago, when they changed how financing worked, they now do it by supervisory union. So we elect a member, we elect membership through annual meetings in the SBA, regional meetings. Usually either in Bradwell, for a while, or Leland and Gray, because our, most of our reps were from Leland and Gray, and most recently in Green Mountain, in Chester. So what Wyndham Central does is, we do have two representatives on the SBA board. We have Laura and Dan, Dan Parker from Marlborough. So what Wyndham, what Wyndham Central has done in the past is we do an annual retreat in September and we discuss the resolutions and then we kind of come to an agreement how we can feel our representation or how our vote should be used at those meetings. So, and if you go on the SBA website, you can read the resolutions. There is a resolution committee that they get sent to, they get approved by the resolution committee and then they go to a vote by the membership at the annual meeting, which is in October.
Well, right, well, and the board does not recommend them all.
The board or the resolution?
The board. So the resolution committee didn't recommend them all and the board supported, I think, all of the work of the resolution committee, including not recommending some of the candidates.
So they can be brought up by people at the meeting day. So if you have any interest, look at the SBA website. If you have any input, let myself or Laura know. And then we can bring that up at the Wyndham Central meeting in September. Or, yeah, if you're in Wardsboro, the Wardsboro board, no, I know Ricky's a representative. For the retreat. Dwight will.
Don't know.
He gets recruited. Okay, anything else from the public? So our next meeting is through September, September 4th is September 17th. We have no executive session, I know. So I think you guys are going to be really happy, we're going to get out of here at a reasonable hour. So thank you for coming and participating and we'll see you in a couple weeks, 7:00 PM September 4th. Need a motion to adjourn? Rick moves to adjourn? All those things, say hi?
Hi.
Wait by Rick.